I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a good thing. Ms. Hill, roll call.
Mr. Callahan? Mrs. Shadkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here. Okay, Ms. Hill, will you summarize executive session, please?
The board discussed matters falling under attorney-client privilege. Personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, was on the agenda but was not discussed.
Any correspondence of note?
No.
Okay. We now need a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
That was Mr. Smith and a second from Mrs. Napolitano. Mrs. Shadkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay. I see that our student council reps are not here tonight, so I guess they didn't get the memo. Okay. Board president's comments. Right now, I have none. I'll save them for the end. Mr. Smith?
Nope, saving all the excitement for the next meeting.
Excellent. Dr. Labby, presentation?
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. This will conclude our budget presentation, so we're going to resume reviewing our proposed budget presentations with a presentation on personnel services and professional development, and then move to our final one of the year on the proposed technology and security budget. But, as I said earlier, let's begin with professional development and personnel services. So, Ms. Burt, can you take us through professional development?
Tess? Good evening, Board of Education members, Central Office team members. Starting off, talking about professional development, and I'm going to be walking you through the 24-25 school year and then going into our 25-26 school year requests. So, as we move forward through the 24-25 school year, we look and reflect on our goals for professional development, and I'm happy to say that we were able to meet all of our goals. Our first goal revolving around collaboration of district staff, district administration, through staff input on surveys, different meetings that we've held and discussions, and we've met that goal. We've also had the opportunity to meet our goal for innovative and meaningful professional development for all of our stakeholders within the district. At our November 2024 Staff Development Day, we had over 125 professional development sessions, and you'll see as we get to see some of the options and choices that the staff had that we really do pride ourselves on making the professional development meaningful for all of our stakeholders, no matter what our position is in the district. Our third goal was to begin building a virtual professional learning library, and we've done that through utilizing a Wakelet through Sayerville University, and I'm going to have the opportunity to show that to you tonight. And in the end of June, the last week after the students dismissed from June 25th to June 28th, we had, we rebuilt our, we called it our PLC framework. And that is when our teachers engage monthly on their professional learning communities. We built a framework based off of existing feedback and talking to all our stakeholders to make it a more meaningful opportunity for our staff to conduct research and data analysis and to really work on passion projects that would really help them, you know, test things in their classrooms and really utilize their data to improve their classrooms as well as student growth and achievement. Okay. Up here, I have a chart of our professional development for the 24-25 school year, and I broke it into four categories, although some of them do overlap. So, the first one is new teachers' support and training, district training, consultant and coaching support, and internal district support. And a lot of these, I'm going to point out certain things throughout the chart, but to save time, a lot of them are under an upcoming slide regarding our highlights for the district for 24-25, so I'm not going to speak to all of them at this time. Some things I want to point out is that in our district, we are very fortunate to have a mentor-induction coordinator team, and they really work very hard and diligently in each of our buildings. We have one for each of our buildings. And they really support our new teachers and staff, novice teachers, within the school district. They are a critical part of our new staff orientation that occurs every summer in the end of August. They support those staff members throughout the school year, and it's from anything from answering questions to going in and watching lessons, modeling lessons, and answering any questions that the teachers have, pretty much on a daily basis. And we do our best to make sure it's someone within their buildings, so they have easy access to that person and that support. We have our district instructional coach, which is really invaluable to our district, Ms. Rose Griggs. She supports all of our buildings, pre-K to 12. Some of the things that she does is she models lessons, provides coaching support, analyzes data in individual meetings with teachers and helps them and provides them feedback, as well as she provides a newsletter, coaching newsletter, which provides a variety of resources, and she really focuses on different articles and resources each month so that way she can work with all of our stakeholders and provide them all support. She also is a huge member with Dr. Agulies, working with professional development, and she is critical to that process. Okay. EdConnective falls on, under a couple of different areas that we have here, and Dr. Agulies, I'm sure, will speak to that too. But we work with EdConnective in regards to new teacher coaching, leadership coaching. They've provided really amazing professional development sessions for us on our staff development days, and they provide coaching and consultation throughout the school year. In looking at our district's trainings, of course, we always have our opening days of school, our two staff development days throughout the school year. Our summer learning went really well last summer. We had three different consultants for a matter of two weeks, where a lot of our staff came in and really had the opportunity to work on, you know, different skills and standards in regards to math, English language arts. And they came in over their summer to engage in that professional learning, and it was a really great opportunity for them. And they worked with a lot of the consultants that we have throughout the school year, Dr. Kenneth Coons, Dr. Paul Rickamini, who's a math specialist, and New Jersey to Teacher to Teachers, who you'll hear more about in a little bit. We've also had CPI and Code Blue trainings, CPR trainings, our mandated GCN trainings. And then, moving into our consultant and coaching support, we had the opportunity this year through grant funds. We've had three through five training from New Jersey Teacher to Teacher, but we've expanded that this school year to also work with our K through two grade levels to have math support and coaching and professional development for all grades, K through five. We also started working with a new consultant who's provided amazing professional development in a lot of different capacities. We had multilingual learner professional development, which is ongoing throughout our school year. They've also provided pre-K professional development on executive functioning. They've presented for our November Staff Development Day, and they've also provided professional development to our parents, teachers, and students for our career and technical education programs. Moving into our internal district, I can't say enough amazing things about our district Professional Development Committee. We have members throughout the whole district that are representatives on that committee, and they work with myself and Ms. Griggs and Dr. Agulies on planning the professional development throughout the school year. And I'm going to speak to them in a little bit under our highlights. We have our Sayerville University, which we run our professional development through during the school year. And I'm going to speak to this PLC committee as well in a moment. Okay, so to go over our professional development highlights, we've really, I know prior to me coming on board in Sayerville, we had our Sayerville University, and after COVID, we've been working on building and enhancing and building that backup. And we've had increased our number of Sayerville University offerings and workshops this school year. And it's a combination of new teacher workshops, workshops that are recommended by administration. I have the opportunity to observe new teachers throughout the school district, and one of the questions I like to ask them is, what professional development would you like to see offered? So, I like to have that conversation so we can provide that support through Sayerville University, not just on staff development days, but throughout the school year. We have our, going back to our virtual professional learning library, which was one of our goals for this school year. So, I'm just going to give you a small glimpse of it. This is the Wakelet that we created for Sayerville University, and we break it up into our different professional development opportunities throughout the year. So, this, this particular screen is for November 5th, where I mentioned we had over 125 offerings. This is all the presentations that the teachers have access to after the Staff Development Day, so they can go back and utilize those resources throughout the school year. So, this is our virtual professional learning library that we're keeping. We're also working on adding, and it is a continuous goal for us, not just these resources, but teachers who are open to it during our staff development days. We have cameras where if they're open to being recorded, so we can record those sessions and also keep them on our virtual professional learning library. So, you'll see that there's a plethora of presentations that were presented on our November 5th. And there's several sections to the Wakelet where you have, we have our new staff workshops and different workshops throughout the year. We have it broken up into different categories, but this is just to show you November 5th Staff Development Day. We also were able to streamline our CPI, which is our Crisis Prevention Institute professional learning. So, we were able to take and build teams within our schools, CPI teams. And instead of having them throughout the school year, we're able to build these into September so they didn't have to use their staff development days. And we, with the help of Dr. Labby and Mr. Naster, scheduled days within the September framework where everybody was trained at the same time. So, it really helped us streamline that process. We had requests, we did a lot of our meetings virtually last year, but it was really nice to come together face-to-face and meet with our Professional Development Committee. So, we changed our process a little bit this year, and we moved to some of our meetings being virtual and then some also being in-person, which I think was great for collaboration purposes. We built our new vision for professional learning, so that's something that Dr. Agulies, myself, and Ms. Griggs talked about. We really wanted to have specific goals for professional learning to really represent the Sayerville School District, so you'll see that within the presentation this evening. Like I had mentioned earlier, we built our new PLC framework, which has been, we've had a lot of positive feedback on throughout the school year thus far. In regards to RTI, we have, last year, we piloted our Intervention Manager, and this year, we are working through our first full year of implementation, and it's been very successful. The staff's been doing an amazing job, and Link, it's been amazing with providing our trainings throughout the school year. We also built the RTI and Intervention Manager resource page. So, that is something that the staff has access to. It's a link on a padlet. They have access to our pilot trainings from last year, all of our current trainings this year. And then, we also are building like a resource library of research articles, anything that is aligned with RTI, and we update it continuously. So, it's a really great resource for our district RTI staff members. I had already talked about our new consultant partnership and our district instructional coach. On our next slide, I'm not going to read it to you, but this is our vision that we built. Like I said, is a collaboration from everyone, from Central Office Administration to our District Professional Development Committee. We revised it several times. We came together, talked about what we thought was important. I want to say in about three or four of our meetings, and we talked about what was most important in our goals for professional learning for all of our staff members. We went through, we revised it a couple of times, and then we had an in-person meeting where we went through the new standards for professional learning and pulled out the pieces of the new standards that we thought were really important to the vision as well. Then, we came together last month, and we took our committee's feedback, our District Professional Development Committee's feedback, and finalized our vision, which you can see here. So, it really does lend itself to student-centered learning, data-driven decision-making, and really working collaboratively throughout the school district to provide meaningful and innovative professional learning for all of our staff with the end goal of promoting student growth and achievement. And lastly, this is for next school year, for professional development goals for 25-26. We will continue the goals that we had in 24-25 because we want to continue to build our virtual professional learning library for our staff. We wanted to continue to provide meaningful professional development, continue to expand our Sayerville University offerings, and always reach out to everyone to be collaborative about professional learning in our school district. Our budget requests are very similar to last school year in regards to having out-of-district and in-district staff presenters to be able to fund them, reimbursement for travel for when staff go out to professional development, professional development supplies for our meetings and our professional development sessions, and then reimbursement, which is part of our professional dues and fees. The two new pieces that are part of the budget request are our Frontline PD Catalog and Suite. This is a piece of Frontline that we saw, which we really feel, even though we feel that our professional development system is efficient, we really feel that we can make it more cohesive. Frontline offers the opportunity to do the registration for our staff members online. It offers the opportunity to print the professional development certificates for all of the staff right from the Frontline system. So, instead of using Google Forms and spreadsheets, it really makes it more cohesive to have it through the Frontline system. Frontline also offers, we use the GCN, those are our mandated trainings. It also offers and has a library of mandated trainings that we can use in place of the Global Compliance Network, GCN. And then, in the past, we were fortunate enough to have ARP funding, which was funded a lot of our EdConnective coaching and consulting. But now that ARP has ended, we've added that as a request to our local funding. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Pranjit, can I ask you two quick questions?
Absolutely.
For new teachers, how long does a mentor stay with them? Because I know that's so valuable for a new teacher. Do they stay for more than one year with new teachers, like all the way through their tenure year?
So, we have a database for the first three years.
Okay.
And we support them through the first three years. But the first year is obviously the most hands-on. And then, we've, we're building, you know, onto that where, you know, they're always invited to new staff orientation. Their mentors are still in, you know, obviously in their buildings. But we've actually just recently added some learning walks where some of the new teachers are walking with the district instructional coach, and they're getting other forms of support to add on to what they already have. But we do look at and we keep a spreadsheet of like all the first three years that are in the district.
And, no, I know, just in the time I've been on the board and when you've been here, you've expanded, we've expanded our professional development incredibly and added a lot more options for how to do things. Have we noticed, and maybe Dr. Agulies could answer this too, have we noticed it helps with staff retention, the better job we're doing with professional development and mentoring and all these programs that you're putting in?
I believe it maximizes their support, and I'm very passionate about, you know, the staff having choice in what they attend to make sure that it's meaningful to them. And, you know, our sessions are a lot of the time based off of data and our district goals to make sure that we're all coming together on what's offered. But as far as the retention, I'm going to leave that piece to Dr. Agulies.
Yeah, I believe that because we have so many opportunities for teachers to learn. I'm going to speak a little bit about EdConnective, as well as their mentors, as well as the opportunities we have for after-school learning, as well as in November and June. It does help. We get feedback that, especially with through EdConnective and that one-to-one coaching, teachers that we had any concern about or some concern about, through that coaching, through that one-to-one, we've been able to not only help them, but turn them around, make them extremely successful. So, the principals are excited about it, and obviously, anytime we don't have to let someone go and we can retain them, it's a win. So, short answer, yeah, I think it's a huge difference.
That's great.
And if I can jump in, I mean, if you look at the empirical research on teacher attrition, first and foremost, what teachers are looking for is to work in a place where they feel safe and valued. Then, they're looking for a place where the culture is very supportive. And finally, they're looking for a place in which they're going to get that professional development support and are able to grow. Obviously, compensation is a factor.
Definitely, but...
And it's a big factor, and yes, we have lost teachers for compensation reasons. But I believe because of the fact that we do have competitive compensation, but moreover, because of our professional development department, because of the culture and climate of our district and our schools, and because of the fact that we take great pride in providing what we feel are the safest environments that we can possibly provide for our students and staff. I think that it goes a long way in retaining teachers.
No, I agree, because as, as a parent in the district, it, it's great to see teachers bringing things back to the classroom that you know they've learned in, in professional development and classes they've taken in, you know, peer mentoring, whatever it be. And I think it brings such great, not only to the teacher, but it reflects in the students and what they're able to do in the classroom as well, so.
Thank you, yes. And in addition to that, we, you know, we survey a lot. We survey after every new staff workshop, after every Staff Development Day, because I do think it's really important. You know, the teachers are the ones with the boots on the ground in the classroom, and we really want to give them everything they need to be successful. So, those survey results always support us. We analyze them very carefully to know, you know, what's very helpful to them and, and what we might shift for next time.
I have a question.
Sure.
With the idea that, just like in any other industry, not everybody who wants to be a teacher is cut out to be a teacher. You might not have the skills for it. You know, even though you want to be a teacher, just not something that you're good at. And you learn that by trying to be a teacher. So, do you use this professional development to identify people who really have chosen teaching as a career path, but it's not cut out for them? Do you do anything to like encourage those people, or do you just fire them? Like, how do you get rid of people that aren't really meant to be teachers?
I'll, I'll answer that question. So, there is, there's a good amount of confidentiality that goes into the professional development side. We want it to purely be formative. We don't want it to be summative. There is a process in place for summative evaluation. But when it comes to professional development, we really want that to be purely in the best interest of helping that professional grow and develop. However, we all know there's something called Achieve New Jersey and the statue created under Governor Christie in which, you know, we have to provide a certain number of observations during the course of the year. Those observations are also tools that we use to provide formative feedback to teachers on how they can improve. But also, those observations are used to evaluate the effectiveness of that teacher. And as you know, through Achieve New Jersey, there are other factors that go into it, such as student growth objectives that play a role into their overall summative analysis. And then, the, I'm drawing a blank, the SGP, the Student Growth Percentile Ranking, Median Student Growth Percentile Ranking, and that's based on their NJSLA results. That's a little bit skewed because it's only for teachers that are in tested grade levels. But all of those go into our portfolio of assessing where they are, how far they've come, and whether this is someone that we want to continue working with our students or not. But we try to keep professional development away from that, where that's purely developing them based upon their needs and so forth. And our administration, our principals, our supervisors, they conduct the analysis of determining whether this is, if it's a non-tenure teacher, whether to renew them or not. And you know that every May, by around, the board meeting around May 15th is when we make determinations on who we're going to renew. And by statute, we have to inform teachers if we're not going to renew them before May 15th. So, a lot of decision-making goes into that, and you, as a board member, you'll, you know that.
Yep.
That's the process that we do, that we undertake to determine which teachers to go ahead and bring back. And obviously, if you're a tenured teacher, there's a process for that as well, wherein which the district, we have to file tenure charges. And there's actually a cut level in their overall score. And if their overall score drops below that, districts, the language is "shall", file tenure charges. So, we don't even have a choice. So, if a, if a teacher for consecutive years falls under that cut score, we have to go ahead and file what are called inefficiency tenure charges. So, there is a process in place through Achieve New Jersey. Having covered everything, but that's just an overall summary of it. Dr. Agulies, if I missed anything, feel free to jump in.
Nope, you covered everything.
How long does it take to determine whether a teacher's going to be a success or not?
Um, you know, so the teachers have four years if they're a tenured teacher. It's a, they have a total of four years to earn tenure.
We don't have to tenure them at the three?
No, it used to be three, but that changed with, with the, with the Achieve New Jersey. Now, it's four years. I would say that in this district, we usually make that decision after the second year. There are some cases where we make that decision after three years, and very few cases where we make that decision after four years.
Um, the, one more then. The fact that teachers aren't going to have to take the praxis, another test, I think. There's two tests that they don't have to take anymore. So, is that going to make you more, like, you know, paying attention to...
No, that really doesn't play a role right now, and again, Dr. Agulies can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. The only praxis that they basically eliminated was this praxis test that students had, students had to take before they started student teaching. And it was basically basic skills or content area. Before they did their student teaching, they had to take this basic skills content praxis.
That proved that they could do it.
Well, that they had the content knowledge for whatever they were teaching. And if they passed that praxis, then they were allowed to do their student teaching. That's the only praxis that I'm aware of that they've eliminated. So, no longer is that praxis required for students in college to go on to student teaching. That's what was eliminated. But in order to get their license, they still need to pass their praxis in whatever certification area they're, they're trying to get their license for.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, we're getting, weeding out the...
It's, that was one of the decisions that were made to try to bolster the teaching candidacy pool. There is a teacher shortage. There has been one for now, probably a good five years. And there is a task force right now in New Jersey consisting of school administrators and lawmakers. Their job is to look at what are the deterrents that are out there for young people to go into the profession of teaching. And one of the first things that they eliminated was that particular praxis that I mentioned.
But did that, you think people didn't do it because of that?
I think that was one of the deterrents. Another deterrent that was determined was the student growth objective. I think the task force made a decision that the student growth objectives weren't really a great indicator of a teacher's effectiveness and shouldn't be used in that process. They haven't completely said that, but I think their actions where they've suspended them for now. If you're a tenured teacher, that action has been suspended. You no longer have to do... You no longer have to do student growth objectives. Your last student growth objective counts. So we kind of anticipate that at some point, they're going to say, "Student growth objectives are no longer necessary."
All right, as long as we're paying attention.
Exactly right. And Dr. Agulies, feel free to, if I missed anything.
Nope, you didn't.
No, more, some of this will come up in my presentation, and I'm sure I'll get more questions, and I'll be happy to answer them.
That sounds like a challenge.
Any, it certainly, it certainly did to me, too.
Absolutely not, Mr. Smith. I mean, unless you want to stay here longer, I got no problem with that, but...
Remember, we do have some retirements. Just kidding.
So if you want to cut it down to one page, should that be good?
Are there any more questions for Mrs. Burt?
No.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Burt. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Agulies, the challenge is on.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. I'm going to cover our human resources goals. Before I get started, it would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that really the success of Human Resources Department really falls on the shoulders of the entire department. The three people I have working alongside me are phenomenal people. One of them showed up today to support us. The two others are here in, I'm sure they're watching, they're here in spirit. Gillian Flanagan's been a phenomenal addition to Human Resources. Her understanding of FMLA law, her understanding of certification, along with what Ms. Bobon was talking about, has really sped up the process. We really get our teachers what they need when they're here through FML, and we're getting new teachers onboard through certification, emergency certification when necessary. So she's been phenomenal. Karen Havens has been a staple in the district for more years than she wants me to mention, so I won't. But she's been phenomenal at making certain that our teachers are put in place as quickly as possible. And our last person who's joined our team, Valerie Bender, she makes certain that she contacts our substitutes, people who want to be substitutes. By the way, we're looking for substitutes. But people who want to be substitutes, she does paperwork on them, processes the paperwork quickly so that we're getting more substitutes in and approved, as you've been noticing over the last couple of weeks. And that is beneficial because that input has raised our coverage in the buildings from about 39% last year to about 68% consistently this year. So we're very proud of the work that we've accomplished as a team, and we hope to continue as a team. Our goals, the first goal, all of our goals are ongoing. They always have to be ongoing in Human Resources, because we never feel that we've completed everything. But our first goal is, we created a diverse coalition of teachers, of teachers to collaboratively develop an action plan that will increase diverse hiring. And by that I mean, we're looking at, we have high school teachers, middle school teachers, teachers from this building, the UES. We have elementary school teachers and preschool teachers all working with us to help understand, as someone asked before, you know, the culture, the climate, what makes people come to Saraville and stay in Saraville. And I always challenge teachers who I meet through career fairs, that if they come and they join us and they see what we're about, if they don't, if they want to be treated like a member of the family, if they want to be treated like someone who's valued, they should come and join us. We're pretty competitive, and I think that the support that Ms. Burt gives them, as well as the administrators, I think puts us in higher contention than most people think. Bullet number two, better address varying learning, social, emotional needs of grade four and five and its implementation of Youth Advisory Council. We have a Youth Advisory Council now, just like we have at the middle school and the high school. This is the lowest level that we go to, and we're working with those students on things that we know will impact them at the middle school and high school. This year, working with Ms. Coglanese and Mr. Tola, we've really been focusing on student attendance and student bullying or student, trying to decrease HIVs, as well as trying to get students here. Those conversations have shed light on some of the reasons students aren't coming to school, which we know, based on the conversations we've had with middle school and high school students, only get worse if we don't address them now. So the things that we're learning here at the UES, we're able to share with the elementary schools and the preschools, and so far, it continues to grow. We have one more meeting this month, later this month, but it's been an excellent learning We're looking to expand leadership capacity within the next five years through creation of district and building leadership succession plans. One of the things that Dr. Labbie did when he first came onboard, and one of the things that I was first in charge of, was a leadership academy, where we had, we recognized that we had a number of teachers that had gone to leadership for their masters in leadership. And we wanted to develop those classroom leaders into building leaders, district leaders, so forth. We're at that level now where we're looking to make certain that teachers who have become supervisors and vice principals and principals continue to get focus on the future, meaning running their own buildings, running departments, and so forth. So we're working on a five-year plan to get those folks in place. As Dr. Labbie has told you, he's not going to be around forever, neither are some of us in central office, and we want to make certain that when we transition out, it's not a void that's left open, but we're confident that we'll be able to move the next person in, obviously with the board's support, move that next person into that spot. And we're trying to do that. We feel that we have an excellent administrative team, and they're working now with us. So I'm mentoring a principal, a couple of principals, and supervisor, the directors are mentoring a couple of supervisors, so that they get to know what our jobs really entail. And I think that's an important process, and it's going to take a little time, but we're working on that. That's why that goal is ongoing. As Ms. Burt said, we partnered with Ed Connective. What Ed Connective is, is a one-to-one coach that's outside of the district, so that the teachers, brand-new teachers, and by the way, brand-new teachers to the district, not necessarily brand-new teachers to teaching. They have a one-to-one coach that allows them to work and develop and grow in their classroom, in their grade levels. We've also included this year a administrative coach. And the reason for that is whether you're, you know, and I'm going to show my age, but whether you're Wayne Gretzky or you're Jordan, all those folks had coaches. And we think that just because you're a tenured administrator doesn't mean that you don't need a coach. So we've provided coaches for tenured administrators as well as our non-tenured administrators, and that's gone very well for us. And we're seeing progress with both our teachers who are getting that one-to-one coaching, as well as our administrators. We successfully ran two career fairs, which yielded about 190 applicants between January and May. We will be having another one this year. We've already had one in January that allowed us to get more substitutes, as well as non-certificated folks to work as custodians in the kitchen and bus aides. So we're very proud of our career fair. We have certainly put things in place, including having somebody from one of the universities that works with us on the alternate route program to make certain that folks that want to be teachers and take an alternative path to teaching can do so, and they speak to somebody within a university that can help them move through that process. So we're very proud of what we're doing with our career fairs. And again, it's that extra step to go above and beyond to help our folks that are joining our family here at Saraville to continue to grow and hopefully stick around for a while. I talked about the substitutes, I'm going to skip that bullet. Our two goals, as far as culture and climate, and Dr. Labbie hit upon it a little bit before, we want our students and our teachers to come to a safe environment, and we continue to work in decreasing violent student behaviors that result in suspensions, particularly long-term suspensions. And we're using the, this year, 24 and 25 is a benchmark, to make certain that we reduce whatever number we have this year, we reduce for next year. As I mentioned before, we're looking to increase student attendance and decrease the number of students who are chronically absent from school. And again, we're using this year as a benchmark for that goal. Now on to the things that you really want to learn about. Need to replace that first bullet? That first bullet has actually grown since I put this together. We are now at six teachers who have announced their retirements. We have one teacher currently on a leave of absence for the first quarter of next year. We have three non-certificated staff currently announcing their retirement as well that need to be replaced. And obviously, as we move further into the year, we'll know more about leaves of absences, retirements, and hopefully not many, if any, but any resignations requested through June and then in July and August. The staff we're looking for to add, we want an evening Bombers Beyond Campus Monitor. There are evening events that are happening at the Bombers Beyond, and we'd like to make certain that Mr. Naster's Bombers Beyond is as staffed as any other building, so we're looking for that. We're looking for supervisor security. That would be somebody to help, to help Mr. Sprague. Mr. Sprague is phenomenal, but he can't be here 24/7. This person would assist in supervising security throughout the district and at different times, different times of the day. Preschool transition teacher and preschool transition para, this is something that we're looking to help those students who are not really, shouldn't still be in preschool, but not quite ready for kindergarten. This class would allow us to move more of those students and get them ready to start in kindergarten. And lastly, this is a stipend position. Eisenhower is looking for an extracurricular director. Basically, it's a person who would help manage the extracurricular activities that they have during the afternoon and evenings. And that's it. I hope I was fast enough, Mr. Smith.
You were fantastic. One quick question for you, Dr.
Sure.
So in addition to the career fairs, are we working with colleges and universities in the area to recruit directly with them or show opportunities to them?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the best opportunities we have is the number of student teachers that we're placing throughout the year. We got about a dozen currently working throughout the district. That also includes with Mr. Naster's help. That also includes people who are looking to be speech therapists, OT, PT, and so forth. So we're placing a lot of people, and we found that placing of student teachers is the best, is our best opportunity for two reasons. One, we get to know them.
Yeah.
You know, I always tell them it's like Survivor, you know, there might only be one or two jobs available, and you have to be the best, and you have to stand out. But it also, talking about support, one of the things that the universities have given us feedback on is that we not only take student teachers, but we try and place them in the same buildings whenever possible, so that they feel supported. It's, you know, it's very difficult to be a student teacher and walk into the faculty room, and you're the only one there.
Yeah.
But if there's two or three or four of you, it makes it a lot easier. And then they're able to take that experience and go back to their universities, talk about how successful they've been here. So we're getting more and more placements through, for student teachers. We currently work with about four. That will give us quite a high number. And then from there, yeah, I'll go to career fairs. In fact, I got three planned for this month. I'll attend career fairs in universities that are set in urban areas and rural areas, in suburban areas, to try and get that diverse mix of teachers.
That's great. Thanks.
Yep.
Any more questions? And again, going back to that research I was mentioning before, if you look at the school districts across the country that are successful in, you know, finding and retaining teachers, it's a whole process. And if you watch what Dr. Agulies was talking about and listen to what he and Ms. Burt talked about, it begins with recruiting. It begins with getting out there and actively finding the absolute best teachers you can, you can, you know, you can find, and getting them to come into your school district. And then it takes an induction program. You have to have a program where you're inducting these new staff members. Many of them are first-year teachers. So you've got to provide them with that professional development, that mentoring, that coaching, all the support that they're going to need to feel successful, that they have all the tools that they need to go into the classroom to work with our students, particularly in those first and second years, which are by far the toughest as a teacher. In fact, many people would argue that the second year is more difficult than the first year, because the first year, you're just trying to survive. And then the second year, you think you got it all figured out, and you realize you don't. It takes five years to be what's called a master teacher. So if you listen to what Ms. Burt said, our program takes them all the way through four years, and we watch them very closely. They start with a coach that comes out and works with them. Then they continue to receive coaching through Ed Connective, but they're always working with those mentors, and they're going to a certain number of workshops during the course of the year. But then beyond that, giving teachers the tools and support that they need to grow further. And one of the things that I love seeing is the number of teachers going out to different workshops like that are on the agenda this evening. It shows that we have so many teachers that just have this thirst for learning, knowing that the little more they learn, the little better they're going to get working with their teachers. And it's quite the compliment. So the creation of a program where you can find the best teachers, induct them, keep them growing. And then one thing that Dr. Agulies talked about, and you might think, well, what does this have to do with Personnel Services? He talked about culture and climate. And that's also huge, providing a culture that is rich in tradition, but also with high expectations for students and staff members. That's huge. But then a climate that makes people feel valued and appreciated and supported. And one of the things, the hallmarks of the program that Ms. Flanagan, Dr. Agulies, Ms. Burt, and our Culture and Climate Committee have established is, I don't know if you read Talk Soup, I talk about it all the time, we do these Dollar for Denim Days. And the different charities that that committee comes up with and our teachers generate funds for is incredible. The number of families in Saraville that we've helped, who have been in major need, is just inspiring for me to be a part of a district like that. So that goes a long way. All those things go a long way in attracting the best and keeping the best. And we happen to feel, and I'm very biased, but I happen to feel we have the very best here in Saraville, and that's the reason.
Thank you, Dr. Agulies.
You're welcome.
Speaking of the very best, our very best Director of Technology is here to provide to you the proposed technology budget. Mr. Glock Malloy is with us, literally right now, virtually. He's already communicated to me. He's corrected me on several items. So he is watching. He is very attentive. He wishes he could be here. Unfortunately, he's under the weather, and he couldn't be with us today. However, our amazing Dr. Woranowitz, and I apologize that, Michael, Michael just recently became a doctor, and we are very proud of him, knowing the amount of work and dedication and commitment it takes to do that. Dr. Woranowitz, I cannot wait to hear your presentation and continue to call you Dr. Woranowitz, because I have to make up for the one Mr. Woranowitz that I said earlier.
Well, I'll try to keep it short, but this is a technology and security budget. We'll show both sides of that separately. For this current school year, many of the technology goals and projects are achieved. They were multi-year projects that we've been carrying for the past several years and will continue to carry forward, including maintaining a sustained device lifecycle to make sure we have new devices, current devices, for our staff, students, and for our network at all times. And a one-to-one student and instructional staff device supply. That's all of our instructional staff, take-home devices for our grade six to 12 students, and in-class one-to-one volume of devices for our lower-grade students. Increasing our physical network security, although we are very heavy on cybersecurity, that includes physically securing our network infrastructure. That's somewhere that we were lacking a little more on the physical side, but we've been working on securing the physical aspect. We have a few more, although we've achieved that, we have a few more upgrades coming this current school year, and then of course, more planned for next year. Interactive classroom board replacements. Interactive classroom board replacements. We have, we've had smart boards in most classrooms, if not all classrooms. They've been upgraded now to interactive flat panel displays, much like this one that students, teachers can touch and work with rather than using a projector. They have a lot more features. There's an onboard computer on them so that they can use them without their laptops. We have been replacing those broken boards, older boards, and then adding classrooms that had nothing with these interactive panels, and will continue to do so next year again. High school esports lab is on the books for this year. We already purchased equipment. We have ready to go, pending some construction at the high school, but from the technology side, we're ready to go. We have what we need, so we're kind of achieved, but in progress, waiting for installation. This building, Samson School, the PA system was recently upgraded with the PA system split, split central office from the school building and add outdoor coverage speakers so when the students are outside in the playground or coming to and from the building. We've added technology facilitator stipends to have a facilitator in each school building using certified instructional staff to help the other certified staff implement technology into their lessons and help them using some of the classroom technology and educational technology resources. We've expanded the Bombers Beyond network. As you know, Dr., Mr. Naster is expanding Bombers Beyond to include a store, and we've had to expand the network over there to accommodate, and that has been completed. And communications platform upgrade. We've moved on to parent square now for our new mass communication and small group communication, one-on-one communication between parents and staff members, instructional staff, which has been pretty successful. On the security side, we're maintaining access control, communication, and our security infrastructure, our camera infrastructure, replacing broken components, expanding where needed. All buildings now have two shifts of campus monitors, so they're covered during the day and for evening events. School resource officers that we've had at the middle school and high school for several years, we now have at the elementary buildings, so all of our schools are covered with a school resource officer from Sayerville Police Department. Our reunification plans, emergency management plans and protocols, and those procedures are being drilled constantly every month as required, and those plans are being refined consistently as needed. There's an enhanced transportation system with GPS tracking on all of our buses, connecting those buses with internet access to manage those buses and keep, account for the students getting onto and off of the buses that was added this year. And ID cards for all of our students, which, again, the middle school and high school have had for several years. Now, every school in our district, every student in our district is using those same ID cards, which also enable that accountability system where students can swipe onto and off of buses so we can keep track of our students. Coming up for next school year on the technology side, many of the items are maintaining what we have been doing, so the maintain device lifecycle, one-to-one devices for our instructional staff and students, the academic software that we use and reevaluate every year, and a cybersecurity response plan, which is always an in-progress project because that is changing quite constantly. We'll continue to increase our physical network security to make sure we're secure throughout on the physical side as well as, you know, the online cyber side. More interactive panels for the rest of the classrooms as we go through the rest of the upgrades from older boards or broken boards so that we have the newer interactive displays everywhere for every student to use at every grade level. Looking at a new professional development system, which Ms. Burt talked about from frontline. Firewall upgrades kind of falls into the sustained device lifecycle. This one's on a longer lifecycle, so it's not with the rest, but it is time for a new firewall for our system to keep us safe at our internet edge. Not yet funded in the budget, an enhanced information analytic system. It's a data analysis system for our student data that our instructional staff and our administration can use to analyze student data on one or multiple data points like discipline or attendance, to identify at-risk students and develop interventions that fall outside of our academic RTI process. And a multi-year plan for interactive signs at schools. If you look at the sign at the high school, this plan would be to upgrade that sign and to look at our other schools to introduce signs like that for the rest of our buildings. Similarly, on the security side for the new school year, some of the items are continuing to maintain what we have done this school year and in prior school years, like keeping our access control system or communication systems, our camera systems up to date and covering any blind spots that we have or areas that we identify in need. Continue to run drills and then identify opportunities to better our reunification plan and our emergency management plans. An enhanced security communication system to really tie in all the security components that we have together for a single managed system that can talk together, that can easily alert everybody that needs to be alerted in case of an emergency. Keeping two campus monitors at each building, but adding that one more that Dr. Agulies spoke about for Bombers Beyond, who does not currently have an evening campus monitor. And increasing the emergency supplies at each building in the event that we have an emergency. We were also looking at, not currently funded, an enhanced weapon detection system. As far as hardware, think of the metal detectors that we have in buildings now. These are enhanced systems that go beyond just detecting metal objects, as well as weapon detection software system that is a software-based, really uses our current security systems that can view the entire campus indoors and outdoors to identify possible weapons or threats. Additional security operations staff, again, that Dr. Agulies talked about, that would be another supervisor, an evening supervisor strictly for security as the security department has grown significantly, so somebody to really oversee our evening security procedures. And I think that covers it.
Absolutely. Can I elaborate a little bit more? So, first of all, on the hardware system, one of the biggest challenges that we have in the morning is the bag checking. You know, I've actually done it when I was the interim principal at the high school. I stick in my hand into the bags, check in those bags, and some of those bags, especially at the middle school, are tightly packed. But feeling around, making sure that everything's taken care of, there's nothing in there, it's quite laborious and it's also labor-intensive, but it also can be a little bit, you know, we all wear gloves, but sometimes there's sharp things. You've got those spiral notebooks you prick your finger on and so forth. So, there's a little bit of hazard to it. And also, it takes time. So, one of the things that we're continuously looking at is some of that advanced hardware where a child can actually walk through the detector with their backpack on. They don't have to take it off, and it's going to detect things. Right now, the products out there are not ready. It's one of those situations where technology is just not there. Even when you go to places like, you know, airports and things like that, while they do have certain technologies, they're very expensive technologies. So, we're keeping a close eye on that, but that's something that I don't think we're ready for yet. I don't think the technology is ready for school districts yet. However, the software is a different story. So, the software is a software that we would call a secondary prevention method. The first prevention, obviously, is making sure that absolutely no weapons get into your school. This is a secondary system in which if, for some reason, a weapon were to get into school and it's brandished, the software will pick it up and alert someone of that, that it's happened. Interestingly enough, this is the same software that was being used in that, I think it's, was it the North Carolina? Was it North Carolina? The latest shooting was in North Carolina, right?
I think so, yeah.
So, that's, they actually had that software, but for some reason, it didn't, it didn't alert them. But it's secondary software. It's a secondary system for detection of weapons. You're first, and now they're doing it. They still have it, but now they're doing like we're doing. Now, they have people checking for weapons when you come in. So, that is something that we're considering. We have what's called emergency reserve, and if we were to go ahead and decide to include that, we would probably pay for that through the emergency reserve system. Just wanted to clarify those two points there.
Two quick questions. Enhanced security communication system. I thought we upgraded our radio system not that long ago so you can communicate with Sayerville PD, EMS, fire if you need to, and we are on the same burrow system for two-way radios? Is this something?
We are. I mean, I think that's just expanding it to the number of people, Mike.
It goes beyond that, but it's another, it's another system that integrates that and several of the other of our systems to communicate together. So, if something happens, heaven forbid something happened here and Ms. Maher has to call a lockdown for the building because something's going on. It will notify even on these interactive displays, this is a lockdown with strobes, with not just the audio, but visual means to let everybody inside and outside the building know that we're going on a lockdown and make those automatic communications out. So, she doesn't have to trigger this and then pick up a radio and go, hey, Sayerville PD, we have a situation. This would be all automated. So, it's really enhancing the system by tying everything together.
Okay, makes sense. And the additional school bus cameras, is that for new buses or are you putting more cameras on buses or?
It's the more cameras. So, school buses have cameras.
Yes.
These are for additional views inside or outside of buses, and even if there are new school buses, budgeted with those buses is the standard amount of cameras, so we won't get a new bus in without cameras.
Without cameras.
This is for additional views beyond the standard that we would have.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a question about the secondary system that you're referring to. I don't know who to direct this question at. So, the system that you're talking about, do you know the efficacy rate of it? Do you know how effective it is? If there is someone who brandishes a weapon in the school, a percentage of success that, you know, I'm not sure how that technology works, but I'm assuming it's in conjunction with the cameras in the school, that it would detect different types of weapons and identify it quickly, but how accurate is it? How effective is it?
They, you know, the software systems that we've looked at claim they have high efficacy. The software system that most people are looking at, including us, is one that includes the software as well as a live person. So, they actually have someone monitoring your software. We had talked about that years ago, having someone monitor our video surveillance. Well, this software system is inclusive of that. So, not only is it the software that detects, you know, for instance, if someone stands up and all of a sudden they pull something out, it detects it, but then you have a live person that's looking at that and then makes the phone call or alert, make, use whatever protocol is used to alert the school that a weapon's been branded.
Okay.
So, again, we're in the situation with all these products where you're just monitoring them, you're comparing them, and so forth, but it is a secondary system. The first system is not allowing them in the first place.
Yes, and I know that, you know, we've had conversations where we worked out the math, how many students, how many security personnel that we have that are doing those bag checks, and what was it? It was less than 10 seconds that they have really per bag to be able to check those bags.
Yeah, I mean, once you get down, once you get the hang of it, yeah. You can probably check a bag pretty thoroughly in about five to six seconds.
And the systems, like you mentioned the airport, you know, obviously, it begs the question when you have, you know, we put our bags on those conveyor belts at the airport, they detect, you know, you know, biosubstance or material, and then also, you know, it can identify that. Is that out of the realm of our budget to be able to put something like that?
Very expensive and not made for schools.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's a whole system.
Not practical.
That they're using. I think at one point it might be.
Yeah.
And that's what we're waiting for. There's, and Dr. Woranowitz can speak to this. There's a portion of this where you're waiting for the, sort of, you know, pardon the expression, the fruit to, you know, ripen. And with technology like this, you don't want to go ahead and spend $100,000 on something that hasn't really ripened to the point where you're comfortable that you're going to get a return on your investment. So, I don't think that we're in a situation, at least for that hardware, to go out and spend that exorbitant amount of money where it might not do exactly what it's saying it's going to do, which, to your point, is efficacy. So, we're pretty sure that the software system, the efficacy is pretty good because it combines a human with a detection, but we're not sold yet on the hardware efficacy.
Yeah, that may still be a couple of years away.
Yeah, and also, and again, Dr. Woranowitz can talk about this, you know, again, we see technology prices drop too, you know, when something becomes more mass-produced and so forth. So, I don't think we're ready yet to jump into that. I think we have pretty, I mean, I think our system is really good right now. Can it get better? Absolutely. Are we committed to turning over every stone possible to keep our students and our staff safe? Yes. So, there might come a time when we are ready to go to that, but right now, we'll just stick with what we're doing if we don't go ahead and choose that to fund that software, the secondary software for next year.
I have a question. How often do you find something in the bag checks, and what is the most frequent thing that you find?
Vapes, probably the most frequent thing we find.
Marijuana vapes or?
You name it, yeah. There have been times. I would say second is pocket knives. Yeah, so vapes and then pocket knives. Thank goodness, we've never found anything more lethal, but we are pretty vigilant, and our campus security monitors are the best. And I can't thank them enough for what they do because, again, I've done it. Sticking your hand in that bag is, it's not easy.
No.
Because you don't know what's in that bag.
Yeah, there's some inherent dangers with doing that with only a rubber glove on because...
Well, they have, they have special gloves. They're not rubber gloves.
Yeah, but you still, you still can get poked by a lot of different things.
Yeah, and to do it in the fashion that they do it so that students aren't waiting outside in the rain and in the cold and so forth, I give them a lot of credit for what they do. They get the kids through, and they do what they need to do to preserve the safety of everybody in those buildings.
Well, the complaints have certainly died down about the length of time that it takes, so it must be going well.
And God bless any security monitor that can actually get their hands in my stepdaughter's bookbag with how tightly packed.
Yeah, and, you know, occasionally, you've got to pull stuff out in order to get your hand in there. And I've got to tell you, the kids are wonderful. You know, we ask the kids before they come up to do the best that they can, you know, to open their bags and get them ready for the checks, and 99% of them are extremely cooperative when doing so.
I know that when I was doing Legislature Day, that's one of the comments about school safety that the kids said, hey, we really do feel safe here. So, it is making them feel safe at least.
Yeah, it's a huge, and it's a huge thing, and I'd love to say that it's 100%, but if I did, I'd be fibbing to all of you. But what I can tell you that is 100% is our commitment to doing everything we possibly can. And that's why it's important to note to you that we are looking at these hardwares and softwares because, again, we want to be that school district that's turning over every stone that we can to preserve the safety of our students and staff.
I had a question about the technology, the proposal for the technology. The last one where it comes to the interactive school signs, there's no dollar value there. Do you have an idea of how much it's estimated to be?
I'm not sure if I have an idea yet, and I think they'll all be different because they'll have power requirements and then the land around them, like the middle school's up on a hill, so they'll really vary. So, we'd really have to look at what the cost would be and what type of signs there are, and then even for manufacturers, the pricing wildly varies. So, this was a somewhat recent addition, but we would really have to look into that to see what the costs are, if they're really unachievable in the first place, or if it's something that we could look at, and then develop a plan to keep those on a lifecycle also.
Thank you.
And just a little update on what I said. Mr. Naster just corrected me. It wasn't North Carolina. It was Nashville, Tennessee. That was that high school shooting there. And Mr. Glock Malloy, he just corrected me that the software system is not the same as the one from Nashville. It's a different vendor. So, inherently, then, it's a different software system, but still does the same thing, but different vendor. Yes. Actually, it's probably relieving to know.
In either case, with the software systems, they'll only be as good as the data that you feed it, and they do work with your camera views. If they didn't have great views, we could see why somebody could... If they didn't have great views, we could see why somebody could pull out a weapon and even the system couldn't see it. I'm happy to say that you would be hard-pressed here to not find a view of anywhere inside or outside of our buildings. So really adding a software system like that, it could see everything except for bathrooms.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Waranowitz.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eric, did you hear that? They're all saying thank you to you two.
Only Eileen.
Thank you for not bringing the blue card.
Okay. All righty, now we are on to board discussion, governance committee, Mr. Fernandez, if you please.
Thank you. We reviewed several policy and regulations that were up for approval. The following policies are scheduled for first reading tonight and second reading on March 18. R 5600 student discipline, P 8601 student supervision, P 5710 student grievances, P 8500 food services, and a new policy, P 9163 spectator code of conduct for intracolic One key discussion point was the spectator code of conduct. We explored a progressive approach to addressing inappropriate behaviors from parents and other adults at school sporting events. The proposed policy include progressive bans for attending future events and required anger management classes for repeat offenders. This ensures that we maintain a respectful and safe environment for all of our student athletes, coaches, and spectators. Additionally, policy 5111 eligibility for student residents and non-students is still pending review by the county. We also discussed potential updates to bylaws, 167, public participation in board meetings, focusing on ways to enhance public engagement while keeping our meetings productive. Finally, we reviewed some recent legislative updates that may impact our school district policies moving forward. And if any board members have any questions or need further clarification, Dr. Labby's right over there.
I'm prepared if you'd like an update, absolutely. Last Tuesday evening, the student achievement committee met. I began by reviewing the curriculum guides that we are asking for your approval for this evening, U.S. History I, U.S. History II, PE 12, PE 8, and Grade 7 Pullout Resource Mathematics. We discussed the format and template for our curriculum guides, which is comprehensive, but I promise it's because the state requires it. And we talked about the different parts. So we discussed the way that a layperson would best look at a guide for review as that unit plan because it talks about what do we want the students to know, what are the activities, how are we measuring what we're learning? And it breaks down the assessments that are going to be used to measure that learning. So we talked a little bit about getting through them, and I know that's going to be further conversation. We spoke about the fact that the revised guides that we've been working on are due to some 2024, 25 standard updates that were delivered by the New Jersey Department of Education for foundational literacy, mathematics, climate change, data literacy, and other things that the state now requires us to have in our curriculum, in addition to preparing for the qualitative single accountability continuum evaluation that we are going through in district, otherwise known as CUSAC, kind of making sure that we have all of the requirements for our curriculum guides ready for that review taking place in April. I discussed the, we're in state testing mode. WIDA access testing is going on. Actually, we just wrapped up the other day for our multilingual learners in grades K through 12. We have our NJGPA, which is the graduation proficiency assessment that our 11th graders will be taking this month in March, and the NJSLA, which all students in grades four through nine for language arts, mathematics, and then science, grades five, eight, and 11 will be taking in May. And all the ways that we are preparing our students in the classroom, in addition to out-of-the-classroom support programs that we have. I provided an update on the amount of students that earned the seal of biliteracy for, or they qualify to earn, they will earn it upon graduation. We have 28 seniors, one of whom is earning a trilingual seal of biliteracy, Portuguese, Spanish, and English. And 20 of our juniors got a head start by taking the test this year. As long as they take it after January of their junior year, it qualifies for the requirements. So we have 20 students already for the class of 2026, which is very exciting. The class of 2025 currently holds second place for the number of students qualifying within one graduate class. We had, a few years ago, we had a group of 32. I wrapped up with talking about a assessment research program that we're running in district looking for a kindergarten through third grade literacy screener that is going to be required by the New Jersey Department of Education for implementation beginning in September 2025. We've taken a look at our assessment plan and what we do in district currently. We are waiting for the guidelines from the New Jersey Department of Education. I was told spring, so whatever day spring starts, I'm going to start harassing them for it. But once we have the guidelines, we'll be able to clearly identify whether we have a tool that identifies all of our students that are demonstrating difficulty with acquisition of reading skills. That test, we have current screeners in place, but it's not as extensive as the state is now requiring. We will have to test over 1,700 students in grades K through three. So that's, we're working on that. And then I asked Ms. Burt for an update, and she provided an update for our High Impact Tutoring Grant. It's an extension of the original grant that we awarded where we are working with 51 students here at Samson Upper Elementary School and providing them some small group tutoring through a partnered company, Imagine Learning, where we're supporting them in their math. We also talked about our climate change grant programs, the assembly where the biodome was inflated at the middle school and all the kids got to go in there and climb and feel like they were out in a biodome. And then the field trips, which are also on the agenda for this evening where they are going to be looking at different ways that humans impact the environment and ways that we do it positively and ways that could use improvement. And that is all related to the New Jersey Department of Education Climate Change Initiative. And we also had an update for professional development, which we heard a little bit about during the presentation, and for our TI programming where we provide interventional services for our students and the new software that we are using through Linkit. And the preliminary plans for the staff development day in June where our teachers will have the opportunity to participate in two sessions in the morning. And then our afternoon is going to be dedicated to our professional learning communities, but different people will be doing different things. And that's it.
Wow, Ms. Grossman, the student achievement committee does so much more when you give the update than Mr. Callahan.
I'm going to plead the fifth because I was using Dr. Labby's summary. So if it's wordy, don't blame me.
And I have a question and a comment.
Your summary.
First of all, first of all, is the rumor true that Paulie Shore was in the biodome? Remember that movie in the 80s?
I was young, but I barely remember. No, I was not in the biodome.
And in terms of comment, I want to commend and congratulate Mrs. Hernandez's daughter because she was one of the juniors who received that seal of biliteracy endorsement.
Yeah, congratulations. We did speak at length. It's not an easy task. We talked about that. Any other questions?
No. Thank you very much, Ms. Grossman. Great job as always. Okay, now, Middlesex County School Board Association update. I'm very honored tonight to be able to announce the unsung heroes that have been chosen from Sayerville. Dr. Labby has given me their names. Our junior is Nicholas Bernardi and our senior is Sarah Torino. So they will be honored at the Unsung Heroes Banquet, which is being held on March 27 at Old Bridge High School. So that will be a pleasure to attend. And then the next meeting will be in May, and that will be the voting meeting for officers for the Middlesex County, but I'll remind you of that at the next board meeting. Okay. Public participation, anybody on any presentation or agenda items? Seeing none, we will close public. Dr. Labby, superintendent's report.
Okay, and I will go quickly as possible. Let's go to finance and infrastructure first. If I can bring your attention to item number one on page two. Again, once again, we cannot thank the DuPont Corporation enough for their very generous grant of $3,000 so that two of our science teachers can attend the National Science Teachers Convention on March 26. And this year, it'll be in Philadelphia, PA. So the DuPont Corporation has been so generous to us with this and with many other grants that they've provided us. So we can't thank them enough. Number two, which you can find on page three, we're asking you to approve a new three-year contract with LightPath, which is our cable vision light path, which is obviously our internet provider. And number 12, which you can find in the addendum, we're asking you to approve an agreement for professional services with the Spiegel Architectural Group, our architect, and that'll be for $47,000 to update our long-range facility plan, which I don't believe it's been updated in a couple of years.
It's been just a little over five, and we're supposed to do it every five. And now with all the referendum work being completed, we need to update the entire thing because there's a lot that needs to come off and just be as completed projects.
Any questions on those or any other items on finance and infrastructure?
One...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So with Spiegel, is that with all the referendum work going on, are they doing as-built and future plans or?
No, this is a state-required document. It's a long-range facility plan to go over our current state of facilities and anything we want to do in the future. So it's a lot of hours to get it updated is really what it is.
Sorry, just a quick question on item number five regarding the light path. Is that the total for all the schools, for the whole district, or is that like per building?
That is for, and Mr., Dr. Waranowitz, are you still here? Yeah. I think that is for the total district.
I believe that's for the district because it's monthly. Yeah.
That's the renewal for the internet contract for the entire district.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. If I can bring your attention to student achievement. On page eight, we're asking you to approve some long-term suspensions, unfortunately, as well as what Ms. Grossman referenced earlier in her report, some revised curriculum guides. Any questions on those or anything else on student achievement?
I have a question. I was still reading the curriculum history two. And when it talks about the presidents, I think it's Unit 11, the New Millennium, and it talks about the president, I just felt that when I was reading that it wasn't neutral. You know, a little bit it was, you know, like talk a little bit, like it highlights a lot of the positive thing of President Obama, not that much from President Bush and President Trump. I just want to make sure how this translates to the classroom, you know, just trying to the kids have a balanced perspective of...
So do you have a specific example that you, did you remember?
Let's see if I have it. Bush talk about the political divisions that occurs, the domestic agenda, the polarization in shaping public opinion about Trump's, the political, I'm sorry, assess political and social division that emerged during his campaign. Evaluate political polarization and public reaction to Trump's presidency, focusing any issues of Russia investigation, impeachment, and approach to the media. And then Obama is describe all the major domestic and foreign achievement of President Obama, including Affordable Care Act, the impact that he has in Falkens is on his effort to address racial division. Let me see. The achievement he has in recessions and debate on, and the efforts that he does. And it talks about the, let me see, Obama. I'm sorry, I just haven't, can I see it in here?
No worries, yeah.
It's Paris.
The one thing I can say, and I'll let Ms. Grossman talk a little bit. I mean, when it comes to the curriculum guides and it comes to a presidency, you know, on a historical basis, it takes a good 10 years to determine, you know, the progress that's made in any type of presidency. So based upon curriculum guides and the standards that are written, I don't think the analysis is quite over yet with regard to our last two presidents in terms of the impact they might have had, as well as, I don't know, I'm not sure if there's reference to a lot of what went on during the last two presidencies in our current textbook. I do know that in terms of, you know, you made the comment about being neutral. I do remember when Ms. Grossman sent that out earlier to us, it does talk a lot about President Clinton and some of the negative things that occurred during the Clinton presidency that affected the country. In fact, you know, the attempt to impeach President Clinton for some of the things that he did while he was in office, that is something that is discussed, I believe, in the curriculum from what I can remember that stood out in my memory. But Ms. Grossman?
So the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for History and Social Studies are specific in that we look at the two areas of civics and that we look at geography. So for the U.S. History II, when we're looking at civics and when we're looking at historical events and facts, they, they look at major events that happened within some presidencies, right? So we, there is material in there about President Clinton. There is material in there about President Trump's first term. Thank you. I couldn't think of the word. And we, as you're correct, it does not include President Biden, and it does not include, obviously, anything there. We do cover some things related to current events. But we look at more than the person, we look at the events that happened within the country related to civics. So what challenges came up during that time period? So the history courses are organized by time, which is why we're about 10 years behind from our U.S. History II course. So it really isn't, it's not partisan politics. The teachers aren't deciding what they teach. You know, it is the major events that take place during history that are identified by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and what's highlighted and what's considered in a historical perspective across the board. So there isn't a, there is no room nor is there tolerance for individual bias or opinions when it comes to politics. In fact, the New Jersey Department of Education and state statute is very specific that it is not a teacher's job to unduly influence student thinking when it comes to civics. So most of our coursework is developing students to be able to read and analyze and look at media and look at primary sources and to form their own opinions about things. So when they're covering some of the topics in U.S. II, they're looking at highs and lows of different time periods. And some of those, they almost saddle different presidencies, but there, I would disagree that there is a bias within our guide about any president. It is just purely based on events that occurred during those time periods, during those decades. So we are very careful that we do not present a bias when it comes to social studies in any way. As a matter of fact, it's part of the regular department conversations that happen with our history teachers is how are we going to discuss things that are happening in current events or things that happen in history without that personal influence? We want the students to see the facts, to see the primary sources, to see the events that happened, and to be able to form free thinking for their own civics minds. I, go ahead.
Are we saying that Clinton had his downfalls and different things, Trump had his things?
What we're saying is these...
Nothing going wrong in his partisan presidency? It doesn't, that's not true, though.
What she's trying to say is the major events that took place during their...
Riots, police...
Presidency.
All of that, is that a part of the curriculum?
Covered.
Truth. Is the truth a part of the curriculum?
It's the facts of the events that took place.
So Obama is not put over like he had nothing wrong in his presidency?
No, we do not have partisan bias within our curriculum and within our classrooms.
Any other questions on student achievement?
I think, and I thank you for elaborating so thoroughly. And, you know, we do, we are aware of how much work goes...
aware of how much work goes into putting the curriculum together, and the teacher guides a tremendous amount of work.
Teachers don't do it, really?
You know, I personally, I would be interested in looking at just that lineup of which events were selected to highlight, because I understand what you're saying, that when the, you know, there's a selection of events that are chosen for each presidency to highlight, let's look at this historical event, but I would be, you know, I just would be interested in looking at what selections were made for each presidency, you know, but I do understand that with each one, an unbiased presentation is given, but also, you know, to acknowledge the point that if one particular presidency, it's only highlights, so to speak, or positive things, and another presidency, that list is, you know, for whatever reason, might be a negative list of things, it could, I mean, we do want our students to be independent thinkers and, you know, arrive at their own conclusions and decisions and convictions, but if we are presenting, you know, only a positive list for this one, and maybe this list happened to fall into a negative list, you know, that will affect how they look at, you know, that presidency versus another. So, I would just be interested in looking at that just a little bit more closely, not to police it, but just, I would be interested to see what...
All of you received a copy of the curriculum, the curriculum that Ms. Hernandez is referencing...
Or let me rephrase, just to take a little bit more time, if we could maybe just, with that particular one, to...
Yeah, if we could put that on hold.
Yeah, just to table it for, for next meeting, too.
Like, to be able to look at it more...
I mean, you have the right as a board member to vote yes or no to anything that you want to vote on. So, if you're voting no, then you can vote no.
Yeah, but I don't want to just vote no, because I didn't look at it the way she said it. And now she's saying that one president, two presidents are viewed negatively, one president is not.
It's just to take a little time.
Well, I mean, but it's inherently important that, you know, we, that we take the time to read things, so, obviously, if Mrs. Blumer wants to go ahead and, you know, pass a motion for us to pull that, we can, but...
I think she doesn't, I think she doesn't understand the wording. Do you want me to read what she's...
No, I mean, I don't think, I don't think you need to, I just, again, if you're not comfortable voting yes for it, then if you have to vote no for it, you can vote no for it. If Mrs. Blum, as the board president, wants to ask us to table that particular curriculum guide, we can do that, too. I think everybody had an opportunity to read it.
Would that create an undue problem if we tabled? And what are we talking about, one, History Two?
They're coming out on April 2nd to audit our curriculum.
Well, earlier than that, I have to submit, so, the U.S. History Two CP and Core Guide was updated because we acquired the McGraw-Hill textbook series last year, and we piloted, so the writing of the curriculum guide has been, you know, being worked on since last June. If the board does not vote to pass this curriculum guide, it is not something that I could submit to the CUSAC Committee on March 16th, I believe, is the day that I'm giving her the binder. So, it would look as if we had an outdated curriculum guide.
Okay, I think then we just vote, and if you are not comfortable, please just vote no.
I just want to make sure that we're the two parts, we're talking about that, and we're talking about...
And while I respect that and I understand it, I think I've stated that our teachers, it is the professional responsibility of our social studies teachers to not demonstrate a bias. We do not lean towards either political party, we present primary sources, we present the facts that take place, we have a textbook that is noted for its neutrality. It was one of the things that we looked at in selecting materials. And I would also like to point out that we did look through the guide with Mr. Howard, and I went through it to make sure that we do that, because it is something that we take very seriously, that we do not express a bias.
And I read through each curriculum guide that Ms. Grossman provided us, and I don't find any bias at all in that curriculum guide or the History One curriculum guide.
Just a final comment on this topic. I understand, you know, given what was shared about the timeline and the fact that if we were to, you know, table this, which would be any board member's right to table it and submit that for a motion, not just the president, but if we, I understand if we do that, it's going to affect the timeline and the time that has to be approved and submitted and whatnot, but I will say that it's not unreasonable for any board member to ask for a little bit more time to look more thoroughly at something, because we are the final, you know, step before it is approved and it is utilized in the entire district. So, I just want to say that it's not unreasonable for someone to say, "I'd like some more time," and it's unfortunate that, you know, we actually don't have that time available to say, "Hey, can we just take a couple more weeks to just, you know, read through this?" We're not questioning anyone's diligence, or, you know, or even saying that, you know, it's, everyone makes, you know, the decision about the curriculum to make sure it's nonpartisan, and I trust what you're saying is true. And as I said before, if you're looking at, you know, for example, the, you know, two presidencies, it could be just a list of historical events that are chosen to go over, but it just might happen, you know, to work out that the one is all positive and the one is negative, and it could present, you know, an impression to students, we're not saying it's deliberate. So, we would just, I would have been interested to see that and just look at that list and just see what list of historical events we're talking about, but in the interest of not hindering the process, you know, I'm willing to go ahead and just, you know, cast my vote on it tonight, but it's unfortunate, I would have liked to, and yes, we're given the curriculum to review, but when someone brings up a particular question, it kind of moves the highlight there and say, "Hmm, yeah, I'd like to look at that more closely again as well." So, you know, I'm okay with moving forward with a vote as well tonight.
Any more questions on student achievement?
Sorry, just further to that, I just had a question, if it were a scenario where we were to vote and we voted no, like, let's say board majority is no, what would happen then, just for our edification?
Then it would have to be revised and recommended to you again.
Understood, thank you.
And if we vote yes, is there any chance, and we do look at it again, and we decide, "Hey, this is different than what we originally assumed," can we revisit it again or no?
If, through motion, you asked us to go ahead and take another look at it, we could do that.
Can I, to assure some of your feelings, I have the guide in front of me. So, we're talking about Unit 11, and one of the activities, the key activities that's here, because you seem to be concerned that Donald Trump's first term, President Trump's first term, doesn't highlight any of the positive. So, we have analyzed the key domestic and foreign policy decisions made by President Trump, including tax reform, immigration policy, and U.S. relations with North Korea. All three of those are considered to be accomplishments of his presidency. So, I, again, urge the board to understand that...
What was it negative? Like, even for Clinton, I don't care so much just about Trump, but...
So, it's not necessarily, I mean, I don't like to use the word positive and negative, those are, it's just things that happened during presidency.
So, it highlights his impeachment.
Which is no, but does it also highlight some good stuff about him?
Again, it's all a matter of what you consider to be good or bad. It happened. They had a vote to impeach President Clinton.
So, what is in here...
So, that's part of the historical events that took place, that's noted in there.
So, okay, so, again, are we saying that nothing bad happened in Obama's term?
No.
That's my question.
Is we're going, it reviews the key events that took place during their presidency in relation to civics.
Right.
It's not for our, it's not our place to say that they're criticisms or that they're accomplishments.
Right, we're just dealing with facts.
It's just the events that factually took place.
That are viewable by our eyes, they're on video, we know what happened.
So, it's up to people to determine their own analysis as to whether that was an accomplishment or something, you know, not.
And so, for here, it says, "Assess the political and social impacts of Obama's presidency, focusing on his efforts to address racial divisions, healthcare, and economic inequality." The way that that's done is by reading primary sources. It's not, the teacher isn't lecturing on what their expertise is, it's not like a college course. You know, they are looking at the different challenges, the different accomplishments, the different impacts that different presidencies, all the different presidencies, had during that time period. So, students are presented with balanced primary sources, people that thought that, you know, there was a response to, you know, international affairs for different presidents that were positive, that were, you know, negative, we're presenting primary sources, and we're presenting laws that were passed and legislation that was changed from both points of view. This isn't a teacher standing up there saying, "This is what my opinion on this is." And that's why we chose curricular materials that were unbiased, and why we present things using primary sources, and we, you know, we require neutrality from all of our teachers, and that's what the New Jersey Department of Education expects in a history course. I mean, I'm not going to say it's easy, it's very challenging to talk about, you know, I mean, every single day, there are conversations that take place, you have students that have different political views, I mean, these are students that are in 11th grade, will be taking this course, right? So, you have kids that very, you know, very well could be voting coming out of these years. So, we teach the students to look at the events from their own perspective, looking at what is available to them in the media, what is available to them from primary sources, and making their own decisions. And it's something that we take seriously, and I, our history teachers are really, you know, I spend a lot of time in the classroom, seeing what goes on in the classrooms, and I, I think that we do a really good job of being neutral and creating students that are going to be civics-minded.
And I think if you look at History One, it demonstrates the same thing. The same level of neutrality is demonstrated in U.S. History One as in U.S. History Two.
So, maybe I can make a suggestion so we can all move forward with this. Obviously, we have a deadline, and we need to vote on this tonight, but perhaps after we vote on this, can we have a small group discussion, so we're not above five, five members, just to go over it and allay some concerns, and everyone then can feel better about this.
Define a small group discussion.
Below five, five board members.
It certainly can be discussed, it certainly can be discussed in committee.
But wasn't this already discussed in student achievement committee?
It, this, just, subject didn't come up during student achievement.
But curriculum is discussed in that committee?
Yes. So, it can come up there, but again, the reason why I asked Mr. Fernandez to define small group, you have to be very careful. If you have more than four board members in your group, then that's considered a quorum, and you can't do that, you can't have that discussion, unless it's in public like we're doing right now.
Right, and that's why I'm saying perhaps...
That's another reason why we're discussing it now, too, because we don't have the ability to call each other and say, "Hey, what did you think of this?" And go into the room and say, "Hey, what'd you think of this?" So, this is really our only time, we can talk about the curriculum as a full body of board members and asking questions. So, nobody should be judging us or thinking, "Hey, you guys are asking questions," because this is our only opportunity to do so.
I don't believe anybody is.
I'm not, I'm just saying, not you, I'm just saying that in general, you know, like Carrie said, we do have the right to ask for it to be adjourned or to put off, and we can't do that because of the timeline. However, you know, as a board, we do have the right to discuss things like we're doing now, and I always felt before that we didn't do enough of this. Like, you're voting yes, 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 and nobody's really talking. So, I'd like being able to talk about it like this a little bit before we vote on it.
Well, no, and I appreciate it.
And I also trust, let me just say something, I also trust the curriculum, because you really have done a good job with all the curriculum, so I'm not going to say, "Oh, this one little piece you don't care about." I think you care about it completely and fully, and you care about the students, but it all, just from what she had said, made me think like, hmm, you know what I mean? So, that's the only reason why we're talking, I think, in more detail, that we all thought that.
And for me, it was a concern that I had, I felt it when I read it, as you explain it, I trust what you said, I know, you know, all the time and effort that you, you and your team put in the curriculum, so we trust in that, too. But I, it was just a concern that I want to, and I want to know if someone else read it, you know, and felt the same way or not.
Well, I think the key here is, as Ms. Grossman is stating, is that they are presenting facts to the students. So, if the facts of my presidency were bad and the facts of Jeff's presidency were good, they are the facts. So, that's what we present to the students, and they are capable of drawing their own conclusions. We're not feeding them information, saying, "This president was better than this president," we're simply stating the historical facts, okay? So, that's... Well, historically, even Nixon, even Nixon did some good stuff, so it's not just...
Yeah, but I think it's important to note that we're...
Yeah, well, that's it, it's fact.
Teaching it all in the civics kind of perspective, because we've got, we haven't done that in a long time, we're kind of getting back to civics and how government works and how policy affects things, and I think that's what the history department is kind of moving towards. Instead of telling, me telling you Reagan did this great, Clinton did this horrible, I'm going to tell you how government worked and how it impacted society and let you make the decision.
Yeah, but let's be honest, they all did good, and they all did so.
Well, but the other thing...
All you can do is look at...
But the other thing, the other thing that you need to keep in mind is you're talking about many years, you're consolidating many years. So, you know, we'd love to be able to list all of President Nixon's events that took place during his presidency, okay? But what I'm trying to say is, you're consolidating many, many years where many, many things took place. That's where we use the standards to help us define the most, what is considered by the New Jersey, the most important events to include in our curriculum. That's where they do lean on the standards in that particular sense to determine that, because, again, all of our presidents have made, you know, have done many things within their presidency. It's just consolidating, I mean, U.S. History Two starts in 19, is it 1950? When does it start?
U.S. Two starts in closer to 1900, I mean, it covers a long period of time.
Even more than that, so, I mean, consolidating all those events from all these presidents, it's, it's, it's not an easy thing to do.
No, we're covering over a century...
Right.
And nitpicking whatever the standard, you know, czar out of it in nine months.
Right.
And I, and I think that what you said about the district moving towards being civics-minded, you know, it's what the state has moved towards. You know, gone are the days, I mean, I would, I would bet it's, students would be hard-pressed to see which side of the political party our teachers are even on, because it is something that they are very cognizant of. They, you know, our, our history teachers take it very seriously that they are not, it is not ethical to apply, you know, undue influence on things. I mean, I, we have teachers that are, you know, that are of all different political parties. I don't want it to be under the assumption that they're all one political party either. So, when you look at the guide and you're covering the, the topics, like, and if you look at the pacing guide that is to the left for each day, you know, you might be looking at a period of time for, for five days, you know, something that's very quick, and again, it's not lecture, it's students reading, it's students exploring, it's, and one of the things that we do have to provide assurance with is that we are providing both sides of controversial issues all along the board. You know, it is in all of ours, that, the New Jersey Department of Education takes it very seriously. I hear and I validate that I will try to give as much time as possible with the curriculum guides. I did share the guides the Tuesday after Presidents' Day with the Student Achievement Committee. I do kind of try to give as much time as possible for a thorough reading and for conversations during it, and I know that we even spoke about it at Student Achievement this time, that we've had a lot to do because of CUSAC and because of the, anytime the Department of Education changes a standard, it immediately throws curriculum work into overdrive, you know, every little thing that they change, you know, one, we want every student to learn about climate change in multiple subjects, and you're like, "Oh, great, that's 14 curriculum projects." So, I will be cognizant, and I will try to give the Student Achievement Committee as much time as possible. I know that Mrs. Iannicone is wonderful at uploading everything to the board work folder for everyone to review, and again, I'm always open for conversations and questions that you have about any of the guides. I have faith in our curriculum writers, I believe that the two teachers that worked on this guide did their due diligence, and they really understood the task. Their content area supervisor went through it with a fine-tooth comb, sat down, I went through it... I went through it with a fine-tooth comb. I take my responsibility very seriously as well, because it's up to me to make sure that we are compliant with the expectations of the DOE, that we are impartial, unbiased, and supporting our students to become free thinkers.
To your point about, about the, you know, is there any additional window, like how much more in advance? I know that in talking with Katia, you know, she is, you know, diligent to do, you know, due diligence and to go through five curricula in the time that she had received it was tremendous, because, you know, we are, you know, we don't want to cast an empty vote, especially with curriculum. We're not doubting anyone's ability to put together excellent curricula, but, you know, we do want to know what we're voting on. So I do know that the job that she had and other committee members had to go through five curricula, you know, in the time, like if they were given it on Presidents' Day, you know, to now, is not a big window. Is there any room for them to get a little bit more time to go through it so that we're at this meeting where we're voting on it and there's no time?
So I did, it did come up in committee and we did discuss it. We, I said that I would try to give it to people as, as early as possible, and we talked about how to, you know, look through the guide and, and what parts of the template are repetitive and what parts of the template are there that, you know, we have to, for each unit plan that's there, we have to tag standards that are related to it. And understanding that the curriculum guide is created for a teacher for interpretation, these don't go out to the students, these aren't syllabuses, they do not go out to a student for review. We do have them on our public website for parents to be able to review, but in ways of looking at it and kind of speeding up that process. CUSAC years are hard and years that we have to make sure that we're prepared. My colleagues would probably laugh because I have talked about the binder eight million times, but we have a, you know, six-inch D-ring binder that has a curriculum sampling that has to be given to the county for review for, and they have checklists for every guide. So that's why we've been on that short timeline, and that was one of the things that I explained during the Student Achievement Committee. But I am cognizant that this is volunteer work for everyone here and that we all have other responsibilities, and I will try to get it to people as quickly as possible. You know, we don't have hard deadlines for the curriculum writers that are preparing the materials. So it is something that we've been working on as well, is kind of making sure. But in a course like U.S. History II, we might have six teachers that are teaching that. So we had two of the teachers that were working on the guide, but we always want to make sure that we're getting guides into the teachers' hands as well. So I will do, you know, my best to get it to the Student Achievement Committee as, you know, quickly as possible so that they do have time to review that. And speaking to someone who, who reads, you know, hundreds of curriculum within a month, I can understand it can be a, a large task.
It's a good task, it's a worthy task, but yeah, thank you, thank you.
Really quick, so, for example, like I saw the curriculum yesterday, because I came through your weekly summary. It, since I'm not on the committee, I'm waiting until, like, yesterday to read it.
It was in the board folder on Friday.
That's what I'm saying, so it is early on, so you had the meeting Tuesday, it's already going to be on the website by like at least Thursday, Friday, right? You know what I mean, like it's going to be there.
It is, it, as soon as we put it onto the agenda, it goes into the BOE workspace.
So it was on, it was in the workspace as well as on the website on Friday?
That's what I wanted to know.
I go ahead and remind you about it in my summary, but it's on there.
Right, I just wanted to know, for you guys to say that.
Well, today is a.
No.
Today is a Monday meeting too, and that's, makes it a little bit more difficult.
I just wanted it out there that it's put somewhere right after the meeting.
I, I can certainly ask for it to be put into the BOE Workspace Folder coming out of Student Achievement, once it's decided that it'll be moved that way, if you would like that, Dr. Labby.
We can do that.
I was just wanting to let everyone know that it is on there, early, okay.
And this is where, as a board member, I do really hope that the committee members on every committee, because I know I do on my committees, if you see something that doesn't sit right with you, you raise a question.
The other thing in the progression of our meetings, normally, if we have one meeting that month, Student Achievement and Governance are after the, the, the board meeting. So you, you have at least three to four weeks to review anything on Student Achievement and Governance. It just happens to be, in this particular case, that Student Achievement was held last Tuesday, prior to this meeting, and it happens to be that we're trying to do the best we can to get a lot of curriculum guides revised so that we can have a favorable grade during CUSAC. Now, we could have gone about just throwing 100 curriculum guides at you, but we didn't. We pieced them so that everybody had the chance to digest them prior to CUSAC coming. So as Ms. Grossman said earlier, it is a little bit of anomaly that we're doing it in this way, but we are doing it to prepare for CUSAC. And these are, these are revisions that we have to have in there in order to get our assessment rating that we need through CUSAC. And again, if you do the math, I don't know, Ms. Grossman, how many curriculum guides have you approved since the beginning of the, this school year to get us ready for CUSAC?
I think we're over 50 at this point.
So she did her best to piece them so that you could digest them in small amounts.
That's good, but I just think it's also good that we sit and have a discussion sometimes about things like this versus just assuming, you know, that we're all in agreement and nobody has any questions. So I'm glad we had this discussion.
Okay.
Moving along to Governance. Number two, which you can find on page 10, we're asking you to approve several new revised policies and regulations for a first reading. I think that Mr. Fernandez spoke about those when he gave his committee report. Any questions on that particular item, because the other item is our HIB?
You're asking about any questions about the.
Number two.
The amendments.
On Governance. Page 10, it's, that's where the motion is.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions, if I may. With regard to student grievance, policy 5710 is being amended. I understand it to be, number one, first level is the student or parent may submit a grievance to the teaching staff member most closely related. Number two, the second level is to submit it to the principal or the designee if they're looking, I suppose, to appeal. We're talking about the appeals process here. And the third level is to submit it to superintendent or designee. So my question is, previously, this policy had a step where, number three, the written grievance may be submitted to the building principal, the superintendent, and the Board of Education in that order, and within a suitable period of time. Is there a reason why we're removing the appeals process going to the Board of Education if they're not satisfied with the appeal decision?
Because there's only two reasons why the Board of Education would hear an appeal to any problem, and that would be HIB as well as long-term suspension.
I'm sorry, can you elaborate? So you're saying that, that.
So by statute, there is only two, and if you look at Board of Education Ethics.
Right.
There are only two types of decisions in which the board will go ahead and hear an appeal to.
Okay, right.
And those are HIB and long-term suspensions.
Okay, so this is not referring to those types of grievances, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So because that's not part of this process?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you. Another part that was removed was, at each level, the student will have the opportunity to be heard personally. And, and number four, the grievant may summon the assistant, the assistance of his or her parents or legal guardian at any step. And number five was removed, a student grievance that proceeds to the board, well, that one you've explained. But those other two points were, the student will given, given an opportunity to be heard and that they may summon the assistance of his or her parents, that was removed.
I, I think that was removed because that's inherent in it.
In the process of needs.
Any parent or guardian is basically be going to be conducting the appeal.
Right.
On behalf of their child.
Of an underage.
Unless the child's 18, the child can select as to whether to have their parent or guardian appeal with them.
Right, okay.
And Dr. Labby, this policy, when we talked about it in Governance, the examples we were given, is it's most commonly heard in the middle school and high school level if, "I want to form a coffee drinkers' club," and the principal says, "No." That's the most common type of appeal that you guys are hearing as related to clubs and student activities. This isn't appealing grades, this isn't appealing anything like that.
It could also appeal, they could also be appealing a class. They wanted to be in a particular class and they're not eligible to be in that class. We have, we happen to get that a lot. A child wants to be in an honors class but hasn't met the criteria to be in the honors class, so they would appeal it to the teacher, then they would appeal it to the principal, and then, of course, it would go to me as the superintendent.
Okay.
I had a question about, no, I appreciate it. Food Services, number four, it says that if a school district does not receive an application or a signed card from the parent, the school district shall make at least one attempt to contact the student's parent and request that the parent submit either an application or a signed card. You know, when I look at that, I think it would be reasonable to allow two attempts to contact the family, because looking at this, it could, you know, situationally, we're talking about a student that might arrive at school and this has not been processed yet, and they might go to the lunchroom and, you know, that could create a situation. What would they do in that situation if they didn't, you know, if this is not processed? An application, this is with regard to the lunch program or the breakfast program, and this is if the school did not receive the application, the signed card from the parent.
So this is. Reduced lunch.
Yeah, this is for free and reduced lunch.
Right.
So in this particular case, you're asking, why would we?
Why only one attempt to contact the family? Because at that point, you have the student in school, so I'm just trying to look at it in my mind how this plays out.
So every, every parent has the opportunity to apply for free and reduced lunch.
Right, right.
We send reminders to parents. We try to contact parents to say, "Hey, listen, make sure you go ahead and file an application." But for us to have the labor to continuously ask people more than once to file that application, it's just too much. We do our best to get parents to do it, but think about the fact that over 40% of our, our, our students now are on free and reduced lunch.
Right.
So that's a lot of people. So we send out as many reminders as we possibly can.
Prior to it.
But individually calling, that's speaking to individually calling a parent or contacting parent individually. We don't have the ability, we don't have the, the, the labor to do that. So what we do is we put out as many reminders to all parents as we possibly can, and we also try to incentivize it through other things like subscription busing, "Oh, that's free if you get free and reduced lunch," and those kinds of things. It only benefits the school district to have more students on free and reduced lunch.
Sure.
But it doesn't impact the child in the sense of, like, if a child just moves into school and might be eligible for free and reduced lunch, first of all, we don't know that. We don't know people's, you know, socioeconomic levels. So if Billy moves into school, all we can say is, "Here's our free and reduced lunch application, please take that home to mom and dad." But we, we, we don't know if Jimmy's eligible. We wouldn't have that information. We're not supposed to have that information.
Unless they apply for it.
So what we try to do is remind parents over and over again, especially those parents that were on free and reduced lunch previously. That's one of the things that Mr. Sittadino, who is our current director of Food Services, does pretty well. He reminds, we have a, we have a, a group of parents that we, you know, know that you received free and reduced lunch last year, remember, because you have to file it every year, please remember to file your free and reduced lunch application. And we'll send out as many applications as we can, but calling individual parents, they just don't have the time within the day to do all those things.
And it's so important that we send it out, because doesn't every year the state raise the thresholds? So you may not.
It may, yeah.
Yeah, you may not think you're qualified for it.
So just so that everybody's aware, in the registration process every year that the parents have to complete, there is a link right there to complete the free and reduced lunch application. So we make it very accessible, it's online, we do also provide paper copies, and we never turn students away from getting food. So I don't want you to think that students go to the cafeteria, they didn't fill out the paperwork, and they can't get food. We never do that.
Yeah, that's what I wonder about, was that point of the process?
Yeah, no, that does not happen.
We're not allowed to do that.
No. And once students have a negative balance, then we, we do have a very proactive way to continue to reach out. So while we do send out reminders, we have the registration process, the schools send out reminders, once you hit that negative, then you're getting constant reminders. So if people aren't doing it, they're just actively choosing not to.
Isn't the threshold like 80 bucks or something? Didn't you go crazy with that threshold?
I'm not aware exactly what it is, but.
The threshold for the negative, for us to send the reminder, no, it's not.
Oh, the threshold for the negative? Oh, I thought you meant the threshold to receive free and reduced.
No, no, to, 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 we allow them to owe us money before we cut them off.
We don't ever cut them off.
Never cut them off.
We don't ever cut them off.
But you know what I'm saying, like.
So there is no threshold.
The balance is, the threshold is not something that they're going to hit in a minute. They're, they could, you know.
There is no threshold, Eileen. So you, if you don't have a lunch and you don't have money, you get a lunch, but it just, it gets recorded as, as a balance now.
The reason it changes.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we have, we have students in the district that have well over $500 on their balance, and we've personally contacted their parents to plead with them to fill out a free and reduced lunch application, and they refuse to. And they also refuse to send in a lunch with their child or to provide money. And they just keep going ahead and building onto their balance, and there's pretty much nothing we can do about it.
Yeah. With regard to 8601, student supervision after-school dismissal, I don't know if it's two different sections for, for referring to two different grade levels. And on, in the beginning, it says it's re, it's changed from pre-kindergarten to grade three, and then in a couple of paragraphs down, it's pre-kindergarten to four. So is it two different?
No, that was a mistake that Mr. Glock-Malloy did fix on the clean version of that.
Okay, all right. And then I wanted to ask about number three being added in, is that, so if a student is on campus, so to speak, at one of the schools, and the after-school program has ended, so what's being added in is that student would then be transferred to the police department by an officer, so can?
So this happens quite often. We'll have parents that decide for one reason or another, or not, I shouldn't say decide, that's probably the wrong word to use, they forget to pick up their children from school. It happens quite often. And when we try to contact them, we can't find them. Or we can find them and they say, "I'll get there when I get there."
And this is pre, pre-K to third grade, we're speaking about that age group?
This is the, the preschool through third grade, yes. And we'll get there when we get there. And there were times when our principals would be waiting until seven o'clock for a parent to get there, and parent not care, feeling like this is, you know, your job. So we have a procedure in place that's supported now through the policy, that if you have a case where a child is, for one reason or another, not picked up by their parent, after a certain time period, we place that child in our leading edge after-care program. And they've been very gracious, and I can't thank them enough for doing this. They take the child so that our principal and our teacher can do other things that they should be doing after their hard day of work, whether it's continuing with where their work or going home to their families. And the parent is then billed by the leading edge after-care service, and leading edge then takes responsibility as to recouping those funds. However, leading edge closes at 6:30. So in that particular case, or actually, six o'clock, in those particular cases, what are we to do with the child? The parent still hasn't come to pick up the child. And when I tell you that this is not like an anomaly, this happens on a regular basis, guys. So in that particular case, those people have families, those people have lives, that's when we request the assistance of the Seattle Police Department to take the child in custody to the police station where they're kept safe until the parents arrive to get them.
Do we have information about what the police department's particular procedure is for that situation?
No, I don't have the specifics on that, but I do know that they cooperate with us with regard to that. They basically supervise the child to make sure the child's all right. We do call the Department of Child Protection and Permanency on cases like that, because I, in many ways, I feel like that's child abandonment. But again, I'll emphasize, this is not like an anomaly. Yeah? I don't know what they're trying to get, Eileen. I don't want to be presumptuous, I don't want to be judgmental.
I'll assume.
But I, 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 I just know that it's become such a problem that we have to have it supported in policy.
And this is bus children too?
Bus children when we bring a, we bring a child to a bus stop and there's no adult there to take that child off the bus. there to take that child off the bus. And we, so what we do, again, our bus drivers are amazing, they recognize that there is no adult there, and guys, that's not easy, by the way. They know the faces, and if they know that someone's not there, they, they don't let the child off the bus, and they bring the child back to the school. We call the parent, the school calls the parent to see where the, the parent is, and the child is, you know, goes back to the school. In most cases, the parent's there within half an hour and forty-five minutes to pick up the child. For one reason or another, they weren't there at the bus stop to pick them up. In other cases, child doesn't show for hours, where in which they're picked up from leading edge childcare, and then in other cases, we have to send them to the police station because there are no adults that are gonna be in the building to supervise and take care of their child.
Is this the first time that the option, you know, of sending them to the police department, is this the first time this is being put in the policy?
First time being put in policy, yes. Not the first time done.
Okay.
In practice.
Now it's official.
Yes, now it's supported in policy. And just a little impetus for that, the previous policy basically stated that a child in preschool through third grade could walk home from school all by themselves without an adult. And the only, in our policy, because it was a standard policy, there was an opt-out from that. So if you wanted to opt-out from us releasing your child alone, you had to fill out this opt-out. We said, we've recognized that this was, this was something that we weren't in support of because of an incident that occurred, so we decided that we needed to change our policy to reverse it. Now, your child has to be picked up, and by the way, that's the practice that's been going on since I've been here in Sereville. We don't allow any child to walk home alone in preschool through third grade. But we didn't have it in policy, so we made sure now that it's in policy. And if you're wondering about the law, there's nothing about the law. In fact, here's the scariest thing, there's nothing in the law about what age a child can be home alone. New Jersey, it's parental choice, whereas other states define how old a child has to be before they're left alone. So that's why we're go, we're taking this precaution. Again, what's our highest priority? The safety and security of these students. So we're making sure that all of our kids that need that supervision, and we define that as being preschool through third grade, are getting that supervision.
A couple more quick questions, and I do appreciate your patience as I, you know, newly to the board and newly going through, you know, policy. For student discipline, our five-six-hundred, it says that when there is, and this is in reference to counseling, letter B, number three, that the counselor may refer the student as appropriate for additional counseling, evaluation, intervention, treatment, or therapy. Referrals may be made to the child study team, the school's intervention and referral services team, a public or private social agency, a legal agency, or any other referral service that may assist the student. So I had a question about, you know, and just to clarify in my mind, what is the procedure with regard to the parental involvement with the decision to refer to outside entities, you know, those decisions?
With regard to outside agencies, specifically speaking, New Jersey has something called New Jersey's Children's Systems for Care. You might have heard some of the, the programs in it, Perform Care, MOBA Response. We are not permitted to refer anybody to that. Parent has to do it. We have to tell the parent, you need to go ahead and fill out a referral for Perform Care or MOBA Response. It is our obligation to do that if we really feel it's necessary. However, there are certain circumstances when we can go ahead and make referrals to other programs. For instance, intervention referral services, the child's struggling academically, the teacher will refer them to that so that we can provide them what are called multi-tiered systems of support. We have a duty to inform the parent of this, but we don't have to get parental consent to do that. In terms of a child study team evaluation, okay? Again, if we have children that have been receiving interventions in school for years and we're not seeing any response to those interventions, otherwise known as RTI, our building administration does have the ability for that and for other emergent reasons to make a referral to the child study team for an evaluation. However, Mr. Nasser's jumping at this right now to talk, we can't go ahead and evaluate that child, though, unless the parent consents to it. So we can make the referral to the child study team for that, but we can't evaluate unless the parent consents to it. We also have another program, Effective School Solutions, which is for our children, and Mr. Nasser talked about this during his presentation, that receive a higher level of clinical care if they have some form of emotional distress. Maybe it's leading to outward behavior in the classroom, maybe it's related, it's leading to suicidal ideations, maybe it's, you know, causing the child to be school-avoidant. We do have that program, but again, we can refer to that program, but we can't do that without the consent of the parent. There are types, there are occasions when we have a crisis, student is in a crisis, and we, we have our called crisis response teams. And if a student we feel is in crisis, we can go ahead and refer them out for psych, an emergent psychiatric evaluation, and require them to have that and for a psychiatrist to say that they're permitted to come back to school.
So you're, you're commenting on the academic and, and that, you know, this is also referring to remediating problematic behavior? So in those situations where the counselor may refer the student to, and...
It could be, that could be INRS, Intervention Referral Services for Behavior. It could be Intervention Referral Services for Attendance.
Right, so it's the referral recommendation going to the parents and then...
No, there, there, for Intervention Referral Services, there is no, there's no, you do not need parental consent for that, for the child to go into what's called Intervention Referral Services. We do need to make the parent aware of it, though.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The last question, and this is a quick one, with our five-six-hundred student discipline, it has the chart that's listing with regard to weapons violations that, that require a mandatory police report. I'm just curious, grades K through three on the first incident of a weapons possession without intent to use, K through three, four through fifth, and six through eight is an automatic police report, but nine through twelve is not. So I was just curious as to why the absence of a police report for high schoolers that are found with a weapon without intent to use? I'm, I'm thinking it might be just a typo or a...
That, that might be a typo.
Being that line, okay.
That might be a typo because that's, it's an automatic police report no matter what grade level.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate your time in answering all those, thank you.
She's making sure that I turn my microphone on. Okay, moving along to Personnel Services, we do have some retirements that I'm gonna talk about real quickly because I, I know it's getting very late. So first, we're asking to graciously accept the retirements of Mary Ann Ford, a third grade teacher at the Truman School, and that's effective July one, and then Stephanie Pedudo, who was also an elementary school teacher, but most recently is an English as a second language teacher, and that's effective May first. So Mary Ann Ford, it is with great pride and gratitude that I announce the upcoming retirement of Mary Ann Ford. Mary Ann has been a passionate educator for the past thirty-three years. For over three decades, she has provided countless opportunities for her students to learn and grow. During this time, she shared her valuable knowledge of teaching with countless mentees, student teachers, colleagues, and friends. She has served on numerous committees and spent countless hours volunteering her time to support school functions. She has been dedicated to her students, both in the classroom and out, by showing up at various events, such as birthday parties and sporting events. She kept her students engaged in many ways in the classroom, such as singing, dancing, and making personal connections that utilized her lessons. She has made an incredible impact for countless young minds and inspired a love of learning that will be, that will last her students a lifetime. We thank Mrs. Ford for making a difference in the lives of so many children in the Sereville community over the many, many years. While we are saddened to see her leave, we are excited for the new chapter that awaits her. So please join us in thanking Mrs. Ford for her exceptional service to the Sereville Public School District. We wish her a happy, fulfilling, and well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Mary Ann, for your years of dedication. You will be greatly missed by all those who have been fortunate and privileged enough to call you teacher, colleague, and friend. And on a personal level, I am one of those people that can call Mary Ann Ford a friend as well as a colleague. I've had the opportunity to, to know Mary Ann since I've been in the district, and she's everything that I just said and more. She's the consummate professional, but she's one of the most student-centered educators that, that I've ever had the privilege of working with. Moreover, she's just a great person, wonderful person, that cares deeply about the children that she serves impeccably, but also the teachers and support staff members that she works alongside of every year to, to meet the needs of the students at the Truman School. So I'm gonna miss her terribly, particularly her bright smile and wonderful demeanor. Stephanie Pedudo. Stephanie began her career twenty-three years ago in Sereville as an elementary teacher, and most recently, for the past nine years, as an English as a second language teacher in the district. Her career in Sereville began as a third grade teacher at Wilson. She later transferred to Arleth, teaching second and third grade. She remained at Arleth for fifteen years, and I think she worked with Dr. Agulies then, as well as four, actually three other principals during that time. She is remembered for the enthusiasm and creativity she brought to the classroom. After seeing an increase in the number of English as a second language students that were enrolled in Sereville, she decided to pursue a second degree as a teacher of ESL and sought a position at the high school for the two thousand sixteen and seventeen school year. As an ESL teacher at the high school, as well as the middle school and this particular school, the Stampsill Upper Elementary School, when enrollment dictated, she demonstrated diligence and dedication in supporting some of our neatest students as they acquired English and acclimated to life in the United States. Just one example of her genuine concern for her students was when her high school multilingual learners were taking their high school graduation proficiency exam. She could be seen pacing the floors at the high school, anxiously awaiting for the results and celebrating the success of each and every one of them, while equally adept to supporting those who are still not there yet. Outside of the classroom, she shared her expertise for this content area with the district as a leader in the English as a second language department, and a mentor for other teachers, as well as a curriculum writer. Lastly, she serves as one of the district's teachers for the adult ESL program for many years, and again, we've talked about that program before. If you ever have the opportunity to witness that program and the teachers that work in it, in terms of teaching our parents English, it's phenomenal. It'll inspire the heck out of you, and she was one of the pioneers in that program, along with, I think, Mr. Vogel was in that with her. The legacy Stephanie Pedudo leaves behind is something she can be proud of, we definitely are proud of, and certainly something we are all grateful for, definitely. We wish her a long and happy retirement in this next chapter of her life, and can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for her students, our staff, and the greater Sereville community. Number eight, which you can find on pages fourteen and fifteen, we're asking you to hire some non-certificated staff for the school year. Numbers nine and ten, which you can also find on page fifteen, we're asking you to approve the transfer of non-certificated staff for the school year. Thirteen and fourteen, which you can find on page sixteen and seventeen, we're asking you to appoint paid coaches with their stipends and volunteer coaches for the spring season. Number seventeen, it's that time of year again, we're asking you to prove staff to work at the two thousand twenty-five Camp Excel Extended School Year Program on an ad, as-needed basis based on enrollment. And Mrs. Bloom, this, that concludes my report.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Microphone. We need a motion in a second for the superintendent's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, we need a motion to accept the superintendent's report, please. So moved.
So I have Mrs. Napolitano and Mrs. Pabon as a second. Mrs. Chudkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado.
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano.
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, but I have to abstain on page three, number six.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes, but I also have to abstain on page three, number six, in finance.
Okay.
Now, anybody for public?
Just please state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Stephen Chudkowski, Five Road Street, and a Sereville resident since nineteen sixty-six, graduated from Sereville in nineteen eighty-four, played with Mr. Fernandez, his brother, he was a fellow defensive lineman, he was the left of, defensive guard, I was the right defensive guard, and a good man. Anyway, Katia Hernandez, thank you for looking into the curriculum as a Sereville resident. I appreciate the fact that you're doing due diligence, and I would love to see what the students are being taught as well. I was gonna speak last board meeting, but Mr. Spazato, he got up and he spoke in deference to him, he seemed very heartfelt about his son being bullied, I just wanted to leave it there. But tonight's a good night to speak, I know it's late, you guys wanna go home. Number one, a couple thoughts, I have a question for Mrs. Bloom at the end. Mr. Spazato was concerned about there being a tone-down in rhetoric. That begins with you guys. During the campaign, there's a ten-minute Facebook unhinged event calling certain members running who are now on the board, bigots and racists. That's bullying, it's not really proper behavior. I've also seen videos where people here at the table, when people would come up and speak, would put their earphones on and turn their chair and not listen. That's also not proper behavior for someone to do when we're looking to communicate with people. Mr. Spazato himself during the campaign, although I believe he's a good dad and a heartfelt person, he doxed two senior citizens, putting out their personal information to intimidate them. That's called bullying. So everything starts with you guys, right? So you're supposed to be the voted election people. Pardon?
I'm sorry, we just lost the timer.
Hey, just start it three minutes.
Keep going.
Anyway, so it all starts there. Everyone wants to work together, Sereville wants to be better, that's why you guys are doing this, right? So amen, work hard, but you guys be the example. Another thought, I've listened, Ms. Hertz? Berks? I'm so sorry, I tried to pay attention. Dr. Agulies, I thought so. You guys talked about teachers tonight. I've talked to a number of your teachers, they're burnt out, they feel that they, all they have to do is constantly do administrative follow-ups, and they're not teaching like they were, and some are retiring, some are leaving. So I know it's tough doing human resources, but you guys gotta find, am I done already?
Almost.
Oh, okay, I was like, wow. Anyway, Mrs. Bloom.
Yes, sir.
So tough job, you guys gotta figure a way. Love to have a question for Mrs. Grossman. Sereville resident, gone out, talked to hundreds of people for the campaign that was there, went to their houses, talked about what they were interested in. Taxes? And being taxed, and also, is, am I done?
I, I will allow it, go ahead, you're the only one, keep going.
So taxes and being taxed, and also the, the school system, when we talked about five-seven-five-six, parents were perplexed that this was happening, whether they were Jewish, Hindu, Catholic, Buddhist, Muslim, and no one seemed to agree with that. Now, in light of that it was being done here, and five-seven-five-six, now in light of the fact that... the fact that the president has now said that there's going to be, there's an executive order, and I do understand that you guys were all told, we told in the past, that there couldn't be a change in that, and there are thirty school districts that have changed it. As a taxpayer, I am now concerned that if there is an executive order that you guys don't follow, you're going to lose federal funding, you're going to go into unnecessary litigation that's going to cost us more money, and all you guys have to do is change it into something that conforms before it goes to litigation and before it loses federal funding, because taxpayers are already upset in Sayerville.
Right, okay.
Okay. But anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll talk next time. God bless.
Thank you.
Yes, we will close public now, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Well, don't we have board member comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, any comments for the good of the order? One at a time, please, and go.
All right, I would like to say, what is the policy, five-seven-five-six is what we're always debating, or talking, five what?
Five-seven-five-six.
Yep. Five-seven-five-six. All right, so I would like to recommend that the board actually makes a vote on this, because it's, every single time we come here, this is what we're talking about, we have people coming from out of district, talking about it, we have Carrie's husband now talking about it. I'm sick of debating it, it's nothing to be debated, it's either yes, we're going to get rid of the policy, or no, we're not. And every, bringing it up every single meeting, having people traveling here to breed it into our brains, is really annoying. And we have other things that we should focus on, so we really need to, I think as a board, bring it up for a vote and make people vote, yes or no? Because it's really getting ridiculous. I don't think we should eliminate it, personally, and I want to just make it clear to the other board members and to the public, that the reason I do not agree with that, making that policy, getting rid of it, is because one kid could be sent home to a parent, who, like some of the speakers that have spoken before us, believe that religious intervention, behavior modification, that that's going to change this person's sexuality, and it's not. So, you know, the idea behind what's going to happen, to me, if I send one kid home to a parent who's going to not accept them, make their life, you know, hell, I can't do it, and I will not vote for that. That's the only reason that I will not vote to repeal five-seven-five-six. And the more I listen to people in the public, and I've said this out loud, and you don't agree with me, so I don't know really, it doesn't matter if you agree with me or not, because I'm here to protect the children, is that, you know, they act like, oh, we're wrong. Protecting one kid, if only one kid is protected, that's enough for me. So, I'm just tired of hearing it every single time we're here, we're volunteers, I'm just tired of it.
If I could comment on that?
Thank you, Ms. Pabon.
I think that we haven't had a discussion, so to put it up to vote, when we as a board have not discussed this at all, we have not had a discussion about it in executive session, we haven't discussed it at the table here, so I think that, yeah, we need to talk about it, but having the public come to the microphone and share about it, doesn't, that's not our conversation, that's us hearing, you know, the public speak about their opinion about it, they're for it or they're against it, but we haven't discussed it yet. So I would say that I'm not prepared yet to cast a vote on this, because we do need to.
You ran on repealing it, so how could you not be prepared?
Running is not the conversation with the board either. You know, we are, and I'm firm in that promise, because we got over twenty-one thousand votes between the three of us, based on that thing that we were going to try to accomplish. So the community is behind us in this endeavor, the majority of the community, and we're going to do due diligence and continuing, but we have not had an opportunity yet as a board to discuss this.
Well, that's why we need to do it, because I'm?
But not vote on it tonight, but?
I'm not saying vote on it tonight.
Sorry, I missed the term.
I'm talking about, we need to put this to rest as a board, you know what I mean? Let's me and Carrie just talk, and Lucy, we're not fighting.
Please don't talk all over each other.
What I'm saying, Carrie, is that we need to just get it done, either yes or no, because I'm really tired of every single time we come here, that's all we, it's?
It's a good thing to, you know, the public coming out and sharing, what that is?
The public is not here.
The public coming out and sharing about it, it's, that is the community of Sayerville, and we are their elected officials, that is them bringing concerns, you know, to us to talk about, so I agree, that we should add it to the executive session agenda in order for us to discuss it and start the conversation.
You can't talk about it during executive session, because it's not a matter of?
You can't talk about it.
The only time you can talk about it in an executive session is if you're asking the attorney a question about it.
Oh, so then here at the table?
So you cannot talk, yes.
Yeah.
The only things that you, that you talk about during executive session are personnel matters, or any matters protected by confidentiality. That particular matter is not protected unless you are asking our attorney a specific question about it.
Which, yes, so, you know, let's, let's do, we can add it to agenda here to start to talk about it.
And I do appreciate what you said about taxes in this town, because we're all taxpayers here. So, I do not vote lightly on any time we're spending money, I seriously consider it. On the Finance Committee, I am very much aware and very excited that we got the state aid that we get, because it helps offset the spending and what we need to burden the residents with. And if we learn from our state representatives, or from our business administrator, or from anybody that we're in danger of losing funding for anything, I'll be the first one to vote to keep that funding.
Anybody else? Okay. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Meeting is adjourned.